Good morning and welcome to our April 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Daughtry to introduce our guest for invocation followed by Commissioner Daughtry's pledge of allegiance.
Great. As Chairman, today I'm pleased to introduce a good friend of mine, Dr. Clay Worrell, to give our invocation. Clay has a Master's in Counseling, a Doctorate in Theology, has founded and co-founded two ministries, and is an executive administrator of a Bible college. Clay Worrell has a unique anointing to empower people through life experience and solid biblical teachings on how to overcome the strongholds in life. Dr. Worrell?
Good morning. It's great to be with y'all. Beautiful, beautiful people. I'm honored to be here. My wife came with me this morning. I'm excited about that. But let's turn right to prayer and what the Word says. Father, I pray according to 1 Timothy 2:1-3 which says, "I exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority; that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior." I pray in the name of Lord Jesus, for our President, for our Vice President, all the Cabinet and Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court to receive the wisdom of God, to act in obedience to that wisdom, and for the power of God to flow in their lives. I pray for the members of Senate, the House of Representatives, and for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners to find your peace and direction, and for these men and women to act and lead according to your word. A house divided against itself cannot stand. Therefore, I pray for them to be unified in righteousness for the sake of our nation. I pray for your protection to cover all of our law enforcement officers and the men and women of the military. I ask for godly counsel and wisdom for judges across this land. In the name of Jesus, I pray that you and your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all those who are in authority in any way. Father, your word says to pray for the peace of Jerusalem because those who live in Jerusalem shall prosper. Lord Jesus, because you loved Jerusalem and wept over it also. I pray that Jerusalem receive the shalama of God which brings wholeness, nothing missing, nothing broken. I pray that no leader of our nation will make any decision that will harm Jerusalem in any way. And in the name of Jesus, I pray that you reveal your perfect will to all the leaders of Israel. I ask you, Lord, to reveal yourself to each person. Thank you, Father, for hearing our prayers that are in accordance to your will. I receive the answers in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Worrell. Okay, now we have approval of our minutes to hear a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Commissioner Page, in discussion. All in favor, please see if I can raise your right hand. Thank you. Discussion just agenda. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add David Harris to discuss HMGP program and update, and if with your approval, do that under unfinished business number two.
Okay. Does any Board Commissioner have an item to discuss or adjust?
Not at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moving. Commissioner Bell, in discussion. All in favor, please see if I can raise your right hand. Thank you. I got 9:05 on my US cell time watch, so we'll begin with public comments. Anyone wish to speak before this board this morning? As if we didn't know you, please state your name, address, and telephone number.
Good morning, gentlemen. Arnold Flowers, 3601 Arrington Bridge Road, Seven Springs, 919-222-1470. Gentlemen, this morning I'm here speaking in regards to the approximately 85 folks' homes that were destroyed in Hurricane Matthew that Mr. Harris is here this morning to give a report on. I'm speaking as a spokesperson for all of those families here this morning. I had a house that was flooded and destroyed, but I'm trying to speak for everybody. Mr. Mayo, Commissioner Mayo, thank you for getting Mr. Harris. I understand you'd want to ask Mr. Harris to come this morning. Thank you for listening to me vent about the frustrations in this program, but it's been two and a half years since we were flooded out. And gentlemen, to be quite frankly, there's been money allocated to clean out the swamps. I've seen there's been money allocated to clean out ditches. The farmers have been allocated money from whole other storm, Florence. And these 85 homes that were destroyed, nobody has been bought out as of yet. I think there might be one or two that's close, but nobody has been taken care of. Now, all of these ones I'm speaking about, if you remember, there were 250 or so that applied, but 85 were initially approved. And out of these ones that were initially approved, it's as if FEMA comes along, or whoever puts all this in motion comes along, and you have people in total calamity, and they give them a certain amount of hope, but then they have been put almost in a hopeless situation that goes on and on and on. Now, Mr. Harris is going to give you a report this morning. I'm assuming he's going to tell you what I've been hearing now for a long time, and that is that there's problems hiring attorneys to do title opinion, there's problems hiring the surveyors. Commissioner Daughtry, you had a career and did real estate closing on a routine basis. I never had trouble getting an attorney. I never had trouble getting a surveyor. But some kind of way, this is almost an insurmountable thing to just get 85 homes. Can you imagine all of the real estate companies in Wayne County, if it took them two and a half years to close everybody on every house that they sold? I realize this is the government, and the wheels of government move slow, but still two and a half years we've gone on with this. Now, gentlemen, these homes, I keep asking myself, why does this not get finished some kind of way? And what possible reason? I will say this, I assume on your fund balance, I don't know where the money's at. Is the money here, is the money at the state? But it's all drawn interest. But all these people having to pay interest. My son, on his house that he has, it's in my name, but that's a whole another story, but it was his house. It has accrued $6,500 in interest since the time. In conclusion, gentlemen, what I'm asking of you is the only thing I see that we can do as a group of 85 people is ask the media to help us, to bring more media attention on this, because it's almost as if we've been forgotten. And what I'm asking of you, the Board of Commissioners, is to don't forget about these folks that are out. These people are suffering. It's costing them every month for this thing to go on. Interest, insurance premium, you're sending us a tax bill on these properties that people can't live in. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers.
Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak? This is public comments time. If not, we'll close public comments out, and we'll begin with the Appointments Committee. Commissioner Akon?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have one appointment that we presented to the Board at the last meeting, and we'd like to act on it today. Mr. Herbert S. Yates be appointed to the Wayne County Planning Board, and that comes in form of a motion from the Appointments Committee.
You've heard the motion. Is any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor, please see if I can raise your right hand. Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Akon. So we're...
Way ahead.
Yeah, we're way ahead. So we just got unfinished business, and let's do the rebid on the stream debris.
Right. Yes, sir. In your agenda packet, thank you, Mr. Chairman, in your agenda packet, you will see a bid tabulation with respect towards stream debris removal project for Part III. The former contractor that was awarded the bid did not fulfill the requirements, and we never received a signed contract, so we had to go back and rebid. Appreciate the work that Noel Woods and our purchasing staff, and also Ashley Smith did with Soil and Water, trying to rebid this. But we did open bids on March 28th, and there's a low bid of Pride Contracting out of Bailey for $287,938.36. And this is grant funding from Golden Leaf, and we would recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we accept the bid of Pride Contracting and award that bid accordingly, the contract accordingly.
Okay. Motion's been amazing. Discussion on the motion. No discussion? Ask, all in favor, please see if I can raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, we have David Harris. David is here. David is our consultant with respect to the HMGP program and also the CTVGDR. We appreciate the work that Dave's done. We know that he has been in an unenviable position because of the delays from the state and federal government. But David, we do appreciate the work that you've done for Wayne County, and we thank you.
The Ms. Flowers' comments are really timely, because it has been the most frustrating experience in the last, now more than two and a half years. But the timing is good, because finally the floodgates got released last week. We found, the county finally got the commitment on the SARF money, the GAAP money, moving allowances and such for the families. And now the offers that go out will contain the whole package of assistance they are eligible for, and I'll review a little bit of that at the bottom. So the interest to see what the end of April's report looks like versus the beginning of April's report looks like. The numbers here, we reviewed before in terms of the 84 parcels, the ones that have been withdrawn, the ones that are delayed pending further store review in Seven Springs. As of the end of March, 60, basically, we're dealing with 67 parcels now, full-time, that are active in the buyout. 60 title opinions been completed, 55 appraisal reports completed, 31 surveys have been completed. Surveys about a little less than half, and I could tell you, it just took a while between the wet part of January and February for them to get out there. I will say this, 100% of the fieldwork's been done for the surveys. I just matter, got to get their reports, their plats in. 100% of the inspections have been made by the appraisers, and now it's just a matter, they've got to get their reports in. We started making offers and then held up a little bit because the, when we sent in the county's application for SARF, and I realized we were going to be making commitments on the buyout, knowing the people were going to be purchasing replacement homes for more than the buyout amount, and we had no way of assuring that they were going to be eligible to get it. And there's been discussion with the state as to what the eligibility's going to be, and so we simply started talking with the homeowners. We've been given information when the appraisals come in, so they would at least know that number, but in terms of a formal offer, formal offer's a contract and an agreement to do it. And we wanted all the money in place, not just pieces of it. Seven of those have been accepted. We got one owner that's going to hire us on appraiser. We've got three scheduled, in fact, one scheduled this afternoon at 2:00. And probably we'll have appraisal scheduled on a weekly basis from now to next three months. I mean, they'll all be coming in now that we can give them the rest of the equation that it takes to buy their house. And the summary for the state relocation funds, we finally got an agreement, we got guidelines, and everybody's going to be eligible initially. A month ago, they weren't. There was going to be an income component, unless you were low moderate income, you couldn't qualify. Well, that doesn't work in a buyout. In a buyout, the objective is mitigation. It's to eliminate potential for damage and that sort of stuff for people, property, the whole works. Lord County Emergency Management, quite frankly, just kind of stood their ground and held on it long enough to be able to get that taken care of. There was also discussion about not, for the people that already, we have some people that have already bought their homes. I mean, they couldn't go back to the home they had. It was damaged. It wasn't worth spending money on. You throw it away. So they have bought replacement homes, but there may be two mortgages, and certainly everybody's got financial stress as a result of the damage. For those people, there's actually provision initially in the guidelines that if you have already purchased a replacement home prior to getting your information on the SARF that you wouldn't be eligible for. That would have been the kiss of death for just a lot of people. With the contract that the state provided to chip, that's been solved. And in fact, Emergency Management took it a step further. And let me just say, there's always finger pointing in these programs. It has been too long, 100% of years is just not acceptable. And even during the process, there is these bumps in the road, hurdles, in some cases solid walls. It's hard to bust through and deal with. But the end, the SARF program that the state has come up with is better than any I've seen since Hurricane Floyd. It literally provides assistance all the way through the gamut. Those people that already bought a replacement home, they may not need to get, may not need the GAAP money, because the house they bought was similar to that one. They still get moving allowances. They still get reimbursed for closing costs. All we need is a copy of their HUD closing statement, and we can write them a check. And we will do that when we acquire the damaged property. Every single family can be eligible for some type of assistance, and the three categories, and I've listed them on the sheet. The biggie is the GAAP money, up to $50,000, different between a damaged home and a replacement home. That's where the rubber meets the road. That's where you know you can buy a replacement home, or you know the amount you're going to be able to spend. Second, it's a moving allowance is based on a HUD schedule that we've used since 1974 in determining assistance for people that are being relocated. It's standard, it's uniform, it's subjective, it's simple to use. Everybody's eligible for it, even somebody who's already moved to their home, they've already had the expenses. They're going to sell their damaged home, so why would they need a moving allowance? They may not, but they're going to be eligible for it, because regardless of the decision that the people made during this crisis period, and everybody made different decisions. Some people are still renting, some have bought, some have got two mortgages, some have a mortgage where they didn't have one before. It runs a whole gamut. But for those, they're going to be able to get moving allowance. The range on that typically is based on the rooms and furniture in the house, typically $1,600, $2,600. The balance of what in essence is $5,000 in expenses is just reimbursing them, writing them a check for costs, for money they've already spent when they bought their replacement home. Appraisal, title work, title insurance, property taxes. Never seen the state reimburse anybody for the payment of local property taxes, but they included that in it, and I think that's, I think that's great. They've got up to $5,000 in that category, and quite frankly, most of them would probably come close to that, at least four plus. Again, it's going to be a cash check for the ones that have already moved. For the ones that haven't, that'll come when we assist them in the closing on their replacement home. The objective will be, we do back-to-back closings. We close on the damaged property. deed gets recorded, come back, close on the replacement property. The money from the damaged property goes into the purchase of the new property, and then part of those expenses are going to be covered by the SARF program. It's really going to make this program work, whereas before, it was not going to be able to benefit a whole lot of people, and a whole lot of people are going to be left out. And the way the state structured is, every single person can get that assistance, even for some that may not need the GAAP, there may not be a GAAP. I mean, their houses are upper valued, and there's replacement housing that's suitable for them, but they'll still get the other assistance from the SARF program. Is all of this going to be worth the wait? No. I mean, nothing will make up for those two and a half years. But it is going to get the people back to a normal existence, take all of this debt, take all of this aggravation, so forth, off of them, and really provide the assistance in the categories where it's needed. And now that we've got all the tools in the toolbox to do that with, you know, we can make commitments on people that are, and they're going to be ready to move. And some, in fact, now that we've given people indication of what those numbers are, now they're looking at building, because they have the money, we have the time, they have the program for them to do that. They'll get that SARF money when their house is constructed, just like we would at a regular closing. It's just going to open up a lot more avenues, you know, for these families, and hopefully we can shift the direction, the thinking to the planning on finally getting the house problem resolved after Matthew, and then eventually just getting them in, and the damaged house gets acquired and torn down, and all we're going to see are wooded lots years from now. But that's the objective. And it took until last week to finally get us all the tools in the toolbox, and we are excited about it. It's now the commitments are going out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we to question time now? David?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I just heard you say, and I heard this in our previous conversation last week, that this is the ingredient that we needed, the SARF funds, which for the public, that stands for State Acquisition Relocation Funds. That is the last ingredient we need to step this up. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, is that I see on your information sheet, we have 13 professional firms working, four appraisal firms, four law firms, and five survey firms. Are these professional firms, has that been enough to get the job done? Could we have used more? Would it made a difference? I'll put it that way.
Well, yes, if we'd hired every attorney, and we got all the surveyors, I think, except maybe one, but we hired everybody who was interested in doing the work and submitted proposal. If you'd had more, sure, we'd have had more of these numbers completed by today.
Right.
And it would have been great. But right now, these firms are making it happen. The attorneys can handle the closing, no problem. You know, these firms, we can schedule them on a weekly basis. They got the capability of handling them. Once the surveys are in, then that's it for the surveyor. And so the, it's the firms that we've got will work. We had, it'd been nice to have had twice as many survey firms to kind of overcome some of the delays that we had during the winter, but they're making it up. I mean, they assured us they're going to have all the surveys in this month, you know, no question.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a couple more things.
Well, let me just...
Okay.
I really don't have a question. I want to ask Mr. Flowers. Have you heard what you need to hear, Mr. Flowers? Because if you're one of the people that's involved, you may have a different perspective than the rest of us sitting up here on this. And I want to know if you heard this morning what you need to hear based upon what your concerns are, what I feel like you think the concerns are for the other eight, three people, or whatever.
Thank you for letting me speak, Commissioner Commodity. All the conversation about the GAAP money, I have been told that I do not qualify for the GAAP money. So why do I have to wait for the GAAP money? It's a long story. It's taken a long time, and I'm not here to beat anybody up. I'm just asking Commissioners to help us, because these people are hurting, and it's costing them more money. They're getting into a deeper hole every month that goes by. I can give you a lot of numbers, and I'll take the time to do that if you want to see it. But you know how compound interest works. These people have mortgages on these homes. I've heard it said that when they're making their payment, that they're building equity. All right, come on, guys. You know, when you make a $1,000 payment on a home mortgage, $200 goes on principal, 800, I'm pulling numbers out of the air, but you understand what I'm saying. The interest, they will never recover. The $200, hopefully, they'll give it back if the appraisal was enough. But appraisal on these houses is an appraisal on the houses in a flood plan. Commissioner Bell, you and I sat on the Board of Commissioners when we did the original FEMA buyout in the 2000s, early 2000s for Hurricane Floyd. That one was finished in two years. We didn't know how to do it then. Mr. Crumpler, I know that when we started on this program this time, that we knew how to do it, and Wayne County, as far as the work that we had to do, was ahead of schedule. We had done our part, but this program this time has gone on this long. And it's my understanding that South Carolina finished their buyout over a year ago, the same program. So I'm not here to throw rocks at anybody, but these people are hurting, and I'm asking you, as our county Commissioners, our representation in this, who are continuing to send us a tax bill on these properties, to help us. Don't forget about us, because it seems like we have been forgotten.
Mr. Chairman, could I finish my...
Yes.
I just have two more things.
And my understanding in our conversations, that the buyout, the priority is the properties that are close to being foreclosed on. Is that correct? So if a person is not in that position in this buyout program, they may be down the line as far as priority is concerned. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The last thing is, is that have, with the SARF money that has become available, have you had time to, and I'm sure you have, but I'm going to ask anyway, have you had time to assess what kind of projected dates that we may be looking at? I noticed that we have 67 parcels left. I know this is going to kick in, and you haven't had time to kick it in, but do you have any, do you have anything that would give us a clue as to when these other 67 parcels may get some action?
We'll be able to get all the offers purchased out in less than 90 days, and of course, that's not waiting to the end of the period. That's like every day, every week, getting those offers out, and then the family can make whatever decision they want in terms of the time to close for some as immediate. some, it's immediate. For others, there's other things they'll look at, but they'll have, they'll have the amount of money, you know, in a, in a contract form as to what it's going to take for their replacement homing, then they make whatever decision they want in terms of making that actual move. So the, you know, we can control getting the information to them after that, the homeowner decides the schedule.
Okay.
And I wanted to put it on the priorities. The priority has always been the properties which were primary residence, owner-occupied. And Mr. Flowers probably has one of the most unique situations that we've got, because it was joint-owner situation with him, his son, but because it was not primarily occupied by the owner, then it's not as high a priority as the homeowners that were, that was their primary residence. We'll be able to get Mr. Flowers' offers along with some of the other ones. The other priority was, and what just those in foreclosure, those that all of a sudden wound up with double mortgage payments, there were some that had health issues because of the house they were staying in, and so we had kind of prioritized those when we made the assignments. But in terms of the closings, it's whichever one, the documents are back and everything's finished and ready to go. Some of those that are high priorities, they've got problems, they've got issues. Where we're not holding everybody up to that gets resolved, we simply put it on a different track, either we work with the attorney or the, or the surveyor. In the meantime, anybody's property that comes in and it's got everything green-lighted, then we go ahead and put them in for a closing. So from here on out, the closings are going to be as quickly as we can make them happen. We start out with that priority, but then it becomes, what's the results of our evaluation of each property? You know, we got some survey issues, we got title issues, we got finance issues, we got people upside down. Some of those were high priorities, and we're going to keep working on those. In the meantime, rest of the folks start getting offers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I hear a lot about the process, the procedures. It shouldn't be about the process and the procedures. We're talking about people's lives here, and it, it's amazing to me, I, I am heartbroken to see not only in this particular instance, but in other instances where it seems like our government is more interested in the procedures than actually dealing with the individual families and how it's hurt them. You are showing that eight owners have withdrew. That tells me, I don't know what those circumstances were, that tells me they got so frustrated with it that they just threw their hands up. It's not worth it to them. Secondly, do we recognize that on an average mortgage, that you're paying, I'm, I'm going to limit that, I'm going to say $500 a month in interest is being paid. If you have two and a half years of that, you've eaten up most of the value of the program. I, I mean, we can sit here and say, well, it was this department or that department, but the point is, it didn't work. And Mr. Arnold Flowers was correct. When we actually went through this back some years ago, we went through that process and completed it, and it seemed like we had more control here on the local level to resolve these issues and get them behind us. I hope that after this is over with, that there will be a review of what went wrong here, because there's a lot that went wrong, and I hope that we can clean that up a great deal. Because people are looking to this board, where we have absolutely no control on it whatsoever. We are totally at the mercy of, of the state and the federal government on when they will allow the funds to be released, but it really makes us all look very bad in government. I hope there will be a review. On the 90 days, 90 days is a lot of time here. That's three additional months. Any way we can streamline that up would, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's just go ahead and cut to the.
Jase, who's, who's to blame here? Is it the federal level, state level, local level? I mean, it's got, somebody's got to be responsible for taking this long. And if it's the local level, we should be ashamed of ourselves. I mean, you may not can answer that question, may not want to answer that question, but, but one of those, one of these three, either the federal, the state, or the local is responsible for this taking so long. And if you don't want to answer it, that's, that's, that's fine, but.
Well, from the county standpoint, it can't start a program without having the money And it took two years.
So that rules, that rules the local government out of, of doing anything, so it falls on the two above, either the federal or the state.
Well, and it would have been great if we'd had the, all the firms, the appraisers, and surveys, and so forth, could get started in a matter of a few weeks. But we went through that procurement process that's required now, and then actually repeated it, because we didn't get enough attorneys. We went out and then started begging attorneys to submit proposals. We finally got them, got all the assignments made and, and under contract in December, and then from that point forward, it is the county's program. It's not, now, we've had this delay in making offers, because we needed to be able to make commitments on people that are eligible for gap money, and make sure that was the case, but that's now solved, that's taken care of. So now, quite frankly, there's not a roadblock. I mean, we, we can look back and, and point fingers, and, and Mr. Drury's right, I mean, they need to come in and take a look, do an evaluation of this, and we'll probably get a pretty good indication of how that's working, because they could take all of these issues that came under Matthew, fix them, and make Florence work better. When we see how the state runs the Florence programs, we'll know whether there's been any review, evaluation, or improvement, and we will see that before this program closes out. We'll see if, if maybe there's been the right changes and, and gotten stuff, the problem's fixed, you'll actually witness it, and you'll be a part of it, because we've got a back-to-back disaster going, go through, do the same thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, again, please.
If, if this is not a problem that the, that the local government, which we are, is not responsible for, we can point fingers. We, that's what the citizens of Wayne County elected us for. If we have, if something's going on that we have absolute no control over, we've got the right to point fingers. And, and, and right now, I'm pointing my finger either at the state or the federal. I'm sorry, but that's just, that's just the way I feel about it.
Let me ask Mr. Chairman.
Try to get order.
Oh, go ahead, Bill. I want to keep beating a dead horse on this. I know you know what you're doing, you've been in this business for years and years. I remember giving you office space in my office on William Street, the Palm, before I became a commissioner. And he's right, there is a hold of it. What makes North Carolina unique? South Carolina's already took care of theirs a year ago, which tells me it's not the federal government. It, the problem resides in Raleigh, and that's just where I'm going to place the blame. And if you know better, then you can tell me. But if it was the federal government, then South Carolina would have never gotten their problem in any year's time, rather than two years and a half. That's my story.
Well, must I tell you, Mayor, Mayor got the floor since I did, but I'll let him go ahead.
I just said, it's, it's obvious from what our legislative delegation has done, especially Representative John Bell. He's had this committee that's been overseeing, and he has been, he has been on live stream on TV dozens of times over the last year stating where the problem is. We know where the problem lies. You're not going to say it, and I don't blame you for not saying it, because you're in a catch-22 here, I understand that.
Well, go ahead and say.
But the bottom, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, is that we already know from our state legislatures where the problem lies. The problem lies in getting funding to the source from the state level. It may kind, may be part of their problem from the federal level, but everything, everything points to the fact that you can't do anything if the money's not there. Now, haven't, let me, I have one other comment. Is there anything that's being discussed? And I don't know if you know about this, David, or not, or if you can even address it, but in my opinion, we've been waiting two and a half years, it may be three or four more months before anything happens. I'm of the opinion that these 84 families, especially the ones that have spent their life savings, because they've had two mortgages, they are bankrupt, this money is not going to make them whole again. Anything that's past a year, someone should look at doing some reparation money to help these people get back whole. This, what we're doing today is not going to make these families whole, a lot of them. Am I correct, David?
That is correct. The program is, is not designed to make them whole. It's, it's to recover, to acquire the property, and to provide some assistance in the replacement housing, but the financial problems that have occurred because of that time, there's not a, there's not anything that's addressing that.
Well, we're putting, we're making a step forward, but these people are still, I've heard, I've heard of cases, I've talked to a lot of these 84 families, where we, there's been, there's been physical problems, there've been divorce, there's been, money causes issues in your married life, I don't care who you are. And, and so the bottom line is, is that I'm, I'm not done with this. Yes, let's get it out there to them, but somewhere down the road, these people should be compensated from a certain point to, it's done. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm done.
I, I revel in, I want to ask a specific question, and Alan Lunkin might need to be in here, or at least react to this one. I, I hear talking about what the county can do, and correct me if I'm wrong, but everyone's still paying the property taxes on these pieces that they can't use, is that correct?
Yes.
They are. I mean, that's, I'm asking for.
The county's made adjustment in these values as a result of it.
The values have been reduced.
So the values have been reduced. And that was my, because we're talking about stuff that we can do, and I, and I'm looking at, every year, every month, every meeting, we get application for present use value. Well, if these properties are not being used, and the persons are spending money someplace else, and they're not being used at all, I hear you say they're being reduced, but is there some percent, is there some real percent? Because 10% reduction, 20% reduction ain't nothing.
Present use value is completely.
Sir?
Present use value is completely different from reducing the value of the, of the property, and that would, that's being done.
Right.
Anytime somebody brings it to the attention of the tax office.
So House owner number 45, if he's having to pay seven, eight, $800 in profit taxes, what is he having to pay now?
I, I think it depends, and, and again, you know, because it really goes back to, as our attorney said, is present use. If it's not used, it may be just the land value, whatever the land value is. So I'm, I'm not, I think every situation is a little bit different, so. But there, there's not just one set percentage that somebody skipped off. I think they look at it on an individual case.
When you say the land value, you're talking about separating the land, so you're not looking at the value of the house, aren't you looking at the where it says the value of the land and the house is sitting on? Is that what you're saying?
There is no use on the site, and it's just raw, you know, the only use, that, and it, my guess, and again.
Well, that's why I said Alan probably was the answer to that question.
We can get Alan to clarify.
But I would love to hear a specific answer.
We can get Alan to clarify.
Thank you, sir, because, you know, we're talking about what, what we can do on this table, at this desk, and if, and it may not seem like a lot, but if you're getting a tax bill, however you call it, on something that you're not being able to use.
Right.
There should be some, some adjustment, that's, that's my point.
Right. If, if I could say one thing, I, I do want to thank, ever since I've been here since '17, we have been dealing with this, this program and these issues. When Chip was planning director, there, there is nobody probably better in the state of North Carolina than Chip Crumpler in trying to work with all the individual issues, and, and he knows the concerns, and he knows them individually, so does Barry. And we're lucky also to have David Harris here, you know, working in Wayne County. He's now working at the Bustleman Building, we had to move him out, but we have him in county facilities. It is not an easy situation, and, and I will say, at least from a staff's perspective, this has always been a priority moving forward, and, and working with David and making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. We are very blessed in this county, you know, again, with Chip, and Barry, and with David and his staff, that we are probably much further along than many of the counties around us because of that expertise. So we're very blessed to have that level of care here in Wayne County.
I agree with that. But I would just want to ask David one question. Do you need any more staff to help with the X's and O's, with the foot running, with it going someplace to do something? If that's not an issue, then fine, but if it was an issue, then that may be something else that the county manager can assist with, and I have no doubt you're doing.
We're adding staff, we're reassigning staff, in order, you know, with, with the work that we do, there's peaks and valleys, and right now, thank goodness, we're finally at a peak, but all this stuff is coming through, and now I can assign the people to it. We work seven days a week.
And that's what I wanted to hear, if it, if it was a lack of personnel to help, let's do something about that. I'm just looking for stuff that we can do something about, because we can all have a philosophical idea about what the state, oh, some problem up there somewhere, I'm talking about what we could physically do here, that's why I brought the property up, and if you needed help, stuff that we can do, not.
Well, that, that's on me, right? I mean, I've got the contract, county expects me to, to hire, provide the necessary resources to do it, and we've, we've understood that, it's just that there wasn't much reason to put people on board without having that full amount, and now that we've got everybody ready to go. I mean, everybody, all 67 pretty much, ready to go, then they all got to be done at the same time.
I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to glean from your conversation today and information what some of those problems may be. I think I understood you to say you actually had put out for proposals for some of these professionals, and actually didn't get much response, and had to go out and actually solicit them and almost beg them to take on that. So if that's being the case, there lies one of the problems. Why in the world would we put additional requirements on a licensed, certified attorney in the state of North Carolina that he's got to fill out additional requirements and processes in order to be qualified for him to do a title search? If he's licensed in North Carolina to do title searches, he ought, anybody ought to be able to, it shouldn't be just specific ones. I example, I'll buy a house today, I can select any attorney that I want to, I can go out of the county if I wanted to. So I've got all the attorney pool to actually deal with. Here, you have got it reduced down to four law firms in order to do all title search, four appraisal firms. Now, these firms are also doing other business, so in other words, they get to it when they can. No priority, and I'm just saying, I think that may be one of the areas. I don't understand why you would put additional requirements on professionals that are licensed in the state of North Carolina to fulfill and jump through hoops in order to be qualified to work for this particular program. But I understand that's what you're having to deal with. So maybe that's something that we need to look at to streamline that process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It wasn't adding requirements to them, it was following the new federal procurement requirements that we had to do, and quite frankly, a number of the firms just didn't want to participate in that.
I agree, I mean, you know, you, you mentioned federal, and people run. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris, I don't want you to think we're here to shoot the messenger. We're here to be frustrated, just like the, the people that's involved, but we're not here to shoot the messenger now. We, I just, I wanted to clear that up. But we're not here to shoot the messenger now, we, I just, I wanted to clear that up.
Well, sometimes you may need to shoot the messenger if you do, if you do fire away.
And I'm through, Mr. Chairman.
I was just on the one thing that popped in my head, David, this made me say, edge you way out in left field. Sort of feeding off what Joe said about who can not do title searches. Every piece of property that, almost every piece of property I have, I've used one law firm, and I think, pretty much, I know that title search is assigned to, the lawyer doesn't sit there doing that himself, he has someone in his office doing that, so I'm going somewhere with this. Is there any possibility that you could reach out to the schools, the law schools in North Carolina who prepare lawyers, that some of that work could be done by them, and could they meet the federal requirements? That sounds like an excellent opportunity for a law school, NCC Central or Duke or somebody that could, that their students could be a part of that, it's, you know, it's, I'm just, that popped in my head and wondering if, because I'm looking for people that could help, Joe say, got four, K five people who want to do it. That sounds like the next opportunity for them. Is that in the realm possible they could help do that?
Possibly, but I tell you, there's just nothing that can replace a local attorney, a local law firm, that knows the people, knows how everything works, knows a lot of the properties, and has that firsthand experience. Sure, if this isn't the matter of going checking out, you know, is there, you know, what's the deed, do the, do the chain of title and everything else, but there are a number of things you wind up having to resolve, there're just a number of things that relate to those properties. We're fortunate that these are all local law firms, one from Lenore, who's here half the time that, you know, that, you know, in Kinston, so they're, they're as close as we can get. It would have just, now that, I think that you want more of that local firsthand knowledge to fill the void, and that means simply more attorneys participating. I think next time, we may just have to come up with a plan and just try to get every one of them involved somehow, some way, as long as they'll complete all of those documents when they get that procurement package that they have to complete. Hey, maybe we can sit down with them and help them do it. Anything to get more of the local people involved.
Mr. Chairman, it's time for us to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akut. Okay, we're going to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Board of Adjustments meeting for a nine thirty AM public hearing, and I'll ask Barry Gray to come forth and give us a presentation.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give the board in this action to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Good morning. I want to start this variance request by saying that at the agenda briefing earlier at eight o'clock, I did go over some information briefly with the board. Of course, no decision was made at that meeting, and I will be going over that same information during this hearing. And so, with that said, I'll introduce the case. This is a variance request made by Mr. Corey Cooper, and this is for property at six forty-eight Old Hair Road in Southston Township. The variance request is a dimensional variance from section eighteen dash one fifty-five, subsection seven of the Wayne County Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance in order to open and operate an internet gaming facility within one thousand feet of residential property. Currently, there are around eleven homes within eleven thousand feet. I provided a map, and there's one on the screen as well, that kind of shows where those homes are. I did identify a distance to some of those nearest homes, being anywhere from two hundred and forty feet, three hundred feet, four hundred feet, and then even some properties across on the other side of Seventy Bypass, the south side, are within one thousand feet as well. So, you do have a map that shows kind of the outline of that one thousand foot area. Currently, there is a building on site, you can see that sort of in the middle of the screen, it is an existing building, it was used for electronic gaming but was found to be in violation, the use has since been shut down. So, with that said, I will talk about the ordinance really quick, and your consideration. And so, in considering a variance, the board must determine that there's an unnecessary hardship, that that exists with six findings that you consider, and so, I'll briefly read over those for the record. The first is that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question because of its size, shape, or topography that are not applicable to other lands or structures having a similar use. The second, granting a variance requested will not, granting the variance requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners or residents with a similar use. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by the property owners or residents of the area in which the property is located. The requested variance will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of this article and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or to the general welfare. The special circumstances are not the results of the actions of the applicant, and finally, the variance requested is the minimum variance that will make possible the legal use of the land, building, or structure. So, those are the items that you consider, of course, in a variance request, any variance request that comes before you, of course, including this one. You do have, we did receive recently two letters, I believe, Dave, you had to have a copy of those. One of the letters is, I think, a petition from twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken, neighboring And with that said, I will say that we did, since this is a public hearing, we did post a sign on site advertising the hearing, we put notices in the paper twice for two consecutive weeks, and then we also mailed out property notices to everyone within the one thousand foot setback area, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
We want to have questions for Barry.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What was the recommendation of the planning board?
Now, this request would not go to planning boards, since it's quasi judicial, it would just come to this board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and this was operating in violation of the ordinance previously, correct?
It was, yes, sir.
So, this is how we got signatures from just about everybody in the neighborhood, it looks like to me?
Right, there are a number of folks on that list, yes, sir.
Yes, there are.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did you say they were operating previously, it was closed down?
Yes, sir.
Violation of the ordinance, they were operating in violation of the ordinance.
How'd they just open up and start operating? I mean, they just opened the door and started?
Right, they, well, they had a permit for a business use, but then they brought in machines that were not part of the original application-
Okay.
And then it keyed them into a different category, I guess you could say, and so, with that, we notified them that that was a violation at that point.
Yes. Just as a matter of when they ceased operations because operating illegally, was part of that operation to shut them down because of parking, enough parking space? Or in number two, was there any safety issues that were involved in, in this operation, such as a, a, a pond, irrigation pond being close by that was accessible to the patrons of this business? Was any of that involved in this?
In the, in the original, the original issue was just based on the fact that they were opening or operating an internet gaming facility without permits. So, parking, of course, is a concern, and of course, the safety and, you know, with ponds and so forth, is a concern, but, but the issue at hand at that point was it didn't meet the setback requirement and couldn't meet the setback requirement, so it needed to shut down, so.
Thank you. It's time for individuals.
Mr. Chairman, you might ask if the applicant is here or whether the applicant wants to-
Yes.
Is there?
Before you, you need to swear you need to first. So, if you'll place your left hand and raise your right hand?
Other way.
Other way.
Oh, sorry.
Dave, that's all right. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And I'll need your name, sir.
My name is Corey Cooper, and I did open up a bingo at six forty-eight Arrow. We did great as a bingo, we did bring in internet, not internet games, but we basically brought in stand-up machines, which the state of North Carolina do allow, up to four, if you're running a commercial business, as I was with the bingo. For example, off of Beverly Drive, there's another, there's another bingo location that has the same setup with the internet, with the stand-up games as well, that's the same format that I use. I went in and looked at their format and used the same one for myself. We did have ALLE come out and told us that we had to remove our, our stand-up games out because it was in violation, they couldn't be in the same room as the bingo. We did that, and we let them know that we, we looked at the same model as the other bingo off of Berkeley Boulevard, and we just modeled ours after the same one. So, we did that, and they, they allowed us to keep on operating. After a while, the county came in and served us papers to cease and assist because of the, because of the stand-up games. State law states that we can have them, so that's basically why we put them in and operated them just like that. We're not an internet sweepstakes, we was a bingo, and these games that they're referring to is called fish table games. They're very popular in the state of North Carolina right now, and we decided to, in remembrance to our bingo, is to bring in more clientele. We didn't think we was breaking the law by any means necessary, we didn't think we was breaking the law, but basically, they came in and shut us down. Before, this is, this is not my first location, this is my third location here in Goldsboro. I had another location off of Williams Street, two locations off of Williams Street. First was a tobacco store, and the other was a vape shop. We also implemented the same games in, because like I said, the state of North Carolina, long as I was operating a commercial business, they allowed me to have those games. So, they, they came in illegally to cut my power and my water off at those two locations. So, I'm just here today to try to, to get on the right side of everything, ask for a variance. This location is, it's in the county away from everything, like they say, it's about eleven properties that's within a thousand feet radius, and we want to see if we can get a variance on that distance, just because, like I say, it's in the county away from everything else. If you go to Berkeley Boulevard, there's another sweepstakes over there, which is adjacent to a thousand homes, and they're allowing to operate a internet sweepstakes. So, I was just here today to see if I could do the same thing in this location, being in the county away from everything else.
Counsel, those that are in Goldsboro, that's responsibility to city council, right?
Yes, sir.
That rules, that's a different, ours.
It's still a thousand feet, it's still a thousand feet away from residents, right? Five hundred?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. May. Is this, can anyone else speak at one? Yeah, we will get the applicant chance to speak, and then ask for individuals to speak. Okay, thank you. You might have some questions for Mr. Cooper, if not?
I do have.
Okay.
I want to make sure that, basically, what I see here is the petition for the zoning variance actually requests that it be approved for internet sweepstakes.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to go away from the bingo and just ask for a variance with the thousand feet, a thousand feet is about three and a half football fields. The closest one is maybe a football field and a half away. So, just asking just for the distance, just to be brought down, just so we could open up and operate there.
Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. You say the closest, the distance is a thousand feet, and you would not have to ask for a variance?
Yes, sir, but the, one of the, the closest house is almost a football field and a half away.
But we imagine, according to Mr. Director, he has the distances here, it shows three hundred, four hundred, two forty, and I know a football field is-
A hundred yards, yeah.
But we're going by the, on this sheet right here, we're going by the distances that he has, and I'm assuming you're showing that that's violating a thousand feet.
I've been doing this for a long time, and I done scoured the city and the county, like, and if you look, I guess, if you look on the map, you know what I'm saying, they did a great job by making this thousand feet rule, because there's no commercial property that you can obtain in the county of Golds, in the county or the city of Goldsboro to operate an internet cafe. Like, I know they got a bad rep for different things, but that's just not me. Like, I've been operating this for three years, I have different locations, I have one in Raleigh, Lewisburg, North Carolina, and we're doing great, and I don't have any incidents, like, I don't have any problems, no robberies, no drug activities, none of that.
But let me ask you this question, in those other locations and those other counties you're talking about?
They have ordinance as well.
They have a thousand?
No, sir.
They don't have a thousand?
They don't have a thousand, you just can't be in it.
But, but they set the distances that they require.
Yes, sir.
So, you're staying within the distances that they require?
Yes, sir.
I'm going after something.
I got you, I got you.
It just so happens that this is the distance that Wayne County provides, this is the distance that Wayne County has set.
I understand, but-
So, what you have to deal with is within the rules of the environment-
Yes, sir.
-that you're operating in, and I understand you're comparing it to someplace else, but when a county sets up rules, and all citizens or people coming in has to abide by those rules, otherwise, there wouldn't be any reason for settling.
Let me, let me, let me state this, so it's, it's sort of like voter registration, because if you're gonna, if I gotta poll this maybe right up the street from my home, but I'm registered to vote seven miles up the street from my home, it's the same, it's the same thing almost, like, they looked at this map and said, okay, they know where all the commercial properties are, so why would you make a rule knowing that in Wayne County, it's a church or, or residence, every, near every, every commercial location it is? So, it's kind of, it's kind of like, if you don't want it, just take it off the books and say you don't want it, period, but state said we can have it.
Well, if you could find a spot that was at least a thousand-
I scoured the whole city and county.
Then that means that it won't work in Wayne County.
But you have one on Berkeley Boulevard.
Let me go back to that shit about that.
I understand this is the county.
Let me go back to that spot.
The city said five hundred feet, so if the city allowing is thousands of residents around that one-
So, you're-
-is within a five hundred feet radius.
So, you, you satisfy the city's ordinance, is that what you're saying? Or do they let you operate within the five hundred feet illegally?
I'm just trying to figure out why I can't operate if you allow one already that's operating right there. I done tried the city as well, I got shut down, water turned off and power turned off illegally.
Let me ask this question, and I don't know where our director could help with this a lot. Is he operating in this, and I know it's not under your control, but is he operating in the city illegally? If they're letting him oper, it sounds like he is saying to us that they're letting him operate inside of the five hundred.
I'm not aware of that, within the city, of the operations and the distances that they're allowing.
I understand what he's saying, but it, we still got, and I'm not here to, we're operating on the, not what the city's doing, but what the county regulations-
I understand that, I was just using that for a prime example, like, if, if it's okay for him, why it can't be okay for me?
But if I, if I hear you right, it sounds like that either the city is approving you to operate in violation of their ordinance, or-
They don't have the same.
It's basically the state law, like, it's, it's, it's up and down with the internet sweepstakes. We've been going through this about eight to ten years, like, back and forth. Basically, one, one side, when we first started, it was, it was, it was a lot of money to even start- Basically, one side, when we first started, it was, it was a lot of money to even start an internet cafe, $30,000, basically to do a plain room, and this is to get a license to operate. So state of North Carolina, you don't even have a license to operate anymore. They don't require you to get a state license to operate a business anymore. So each city, each county has their own ordinance to, I guess, to prevent it, if you want to say. So I'm just trying to ask for a variance just on the distance away from the residence, because a thousand feet is, that's a lot, when it is a commercial property that sits right there on its own side street.
And Mr. Mayor, are you still operating in the city?
No, sir. Like I said, they shut me down illegally, they turned my water off and my power off illegally.
Mr. Attorney, can I ask why he was shut down? Is it, can I ask that?
That would be...
As far as the city?
That would be a city issue, not a county.
I understand, but he can tell me why. Can I ask him why?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain to me why, if they shut your water and electricity stuff?
Because they said I was running an internet cafe illegally. Basically, an internet cafe is computers, a lot of my customers are older people, retired people, want to come, just enjoy theirselves, they're not working anymore. So, you know, they can come enjoy theirselves, play the computer, win some money. A lot of people ain't getting on the plane to go to Vegas. The state of North Carolina said this is legal now. They're allowing this to happen. I got shut down because I opened up a tobacco store, and I put in the same game, which one game that don't even run off internet at all. You plug it into a socket and it just continues to run. People can win money off it, and they put their own money in, and a redeemed ticket comes out, they take it to the cashier, and she pays them whatever that redeemed money is, okay? It don't have internet on it at all. Not at all. Eight people can play it at one time. It's just enjoyment. I put it inside a tobacco store. It's not an internet, one game don't make it an internet cafe. They shut me down, said I was operating a legal internet cafe. I had a full-blown tobacco store.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
May I ask more? This thousand-foot requirement was not established just for this establishment. This law was already in place all over the county, and I think we're missing out. We keep bringing the city into this, and the city, if this is not in the ETJ of the city, the city's got nothing to do with decisions we make. I don't think they would appreciate us trying to tend to what they do, and I feel like our feelings would probably be the same. So we keep bringing it to the city, and we leave the city out of this, because the city has absolutely nothing to do with this.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Can I say?
Yeah.
So when you, when you came up with a thousand foot away from a residence, like, did anybody pay attention to where the commercial property were when they made that decision on the thousand foot away from a residence? Or it's just like, they might have just said, hey, we just don't want it, period?
Well, we don't want it near, wait, let me finish. We don't want it near residences, because the residents, the residential folk have invested in their homes and in their quality of life, and regardless of who it is attending, there's a group of people attending that function that will cause a change in the quality of life in that neighborhood if it's on additional traffic. And we're not talking about, we're not suggesting that, you brought the fact that it's old people, retired and all that, but that's...
That's where my customers are.
That's increasing the traffic, and anytime you increase the traffic, you increase the opportunity for somebody who did it in your establishment to have a wreck with somebody that's backing out of their driveway. You know what I'm saying? So when you see ordinances like this, there's all kinds of reasons why someone would not want something that was going to bring additional traffic, even just additional traffic.
I understand.
Having nothing to do with your clientele or what attitude they may bring. And the residents who oppose this are concerned with, if you didn't do nothing to stop the additional traffic, they're backing in and out of their driveway. And let me tell you something, I'm not, but I'm looking out here at people who may be close to my age. You know, you backing out of your driveway is not a sure thing these days.
I understand.
I'm being honest with you. I live on a street where people love to take a shortcut to get someplace else.
I understand.
It's a Russian roulette, each time I back out of my driveway, so I just want you to understand the whole picture.
I understand.
And it ain't about you, it ain't about your clientele, it's about overall safety.
Yes, sir.
I understand that.
I understand.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. We're going to open up now for individuals, maybe we should come before this board and speak. If we will ask you to come before us.
Just before we read your oath, I'm going to ask Mr. Cox to come up here, because he wants me to pass this out in reference to this, and then I'll swear you in, or I'll do it both at the same time.
Swear in everybody.
If you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. He's going to join you there. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
I do.
Before, and I'll get to Megan in just a moment, this young lady speaks. This is from Mr. Cox, who has just testified that the information in this letter is the truth, and it is from...
And your name, then? Phyllis Candler. My name is Phyllis Candler. I live on Hairland. I've lived on that property since 1972. This is where we live. This is where we reside. This is where we are safe. And we want to keep it that way. We don't like the irrigation pond, but it's there for a purpose. It's not got a fence around it. There's a building that's not but about two to three feet away from it. One door coming out of the back. If something happens and that door couldn't get open and there was a fire, it'd be a problem, if you had to get out of the back. I have tried, I took a picture of me going out and my husband coming in. It's dangerous. Someone's going to get hurt. It's not going to be me, because I'm going to be out of your way, but it'll be the ones that's breaking their necks to get in there to start gambling. This is not where we chose to live. This is where we chose to live. But what we've got stuck with is something that somebody else wants that's not even decent in my eyes. I don't want it. We don't need it. We've survived since 1972 without it. It's not just an irrigation pond. There's not a parking lot. It's not far from the Sandy Highway. Anybody could jump over that fence, rob them, jump back in and be gone. I'm not going to, but somebody else might would. This is where we live, and that's what we want to keep living in. Thank you.
Mr. Cox, will you?
Yes, sir. I don't really have anything to add to my letter. I'd really rather let that speak for itself, and so I'd appreciate if you'd just take a minute to read that. If you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer it.
Is anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
If you will place your left hand other way, and raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So help you God.
I do.
And your name, then?
My name is Janet Ward. Good morning. I reside also on Hair Road, and I oppose it. I hope, I do not oppose him having a business, but Mr. Cooper having a business, but I do oppose the business being on Hair Road. Reason being, it's a neighborhood of elderly people, and that same road, some of our neighbors, they, you know, take walks up and down that road. Also, from what my understanding about electronic gaming is that there will be gambling going on, and when you have a place where gambling is going on, it opens it up to being robbed. Not only that, but it opens it up to population, maybe that we don't necessarily want going back and forth in our neighborhood. The street is very, it's a small street. You don't hardly have any parking spaces, as she, the lady said before me. And we just feel like, because, you know, they're elderly people, and they feel pretty safe, and I feel pretty safe in that neighborhood, we thought that if you would, just, you know, consider our opposition to it based on those reasons. Another thing is too, from my understanding with the electronic gaming facility, is that sometimes they're late at night, it could be all times of night, and that within itself could cause problems as well. So I pray that you all will listen and consider our opposition to it. And I know that it used to be a church, and we didn't have a problem with it being a church because those people were out at a certain time of the day, you didn't see them there, you know, all times of night. So please consider our opposition to this, and I pray that Mr. Cooper will have found his business somewhere else, but not in our residential area. I feel like it also would put the value of our homes down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Page.
I took a little bit of, oh, you want to speak? Okay.
If you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And your name?
Brendan Newsom.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom.
My name is Brendan Newsom. I live at 670 Hair Road, and any traffic that goes down to this building, they have to turn right directly in front of my house, and it's like meets my drive. And when they had this facility as a bingo place in the past, I had to get up every morning and get trash, beer bottles, beer cans, everything, out of my yard, and that was a constant. And most of the traffic that was going there was like at 3:00 in the morning on. I don't know what they could have been doing at 3:00 in the morning. I don't mean this ugly, but I don't see them playing bingo. But like I said, that's, and that's, I have been living there for about 16 years, and this is my home. I pride myself on my yard and try to keep my place, my lot, looking good, but I had to, every day, once they were operating that, I had to get up in the mornings and clean up. And I just don't think that we need another facility like that in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I too live in the Sawston community, and I've witnessed going by there night or day this operation going on. Everybody has a right to make a living, and I hope you do find a place to do that. I wouldn't want any, any kind of business opened up within 300 feet of my house, and I understand, this is their neighborhood, and they've been living there for years. It does not meet the thousand feet, and I don't see a good reason why we would vary the thousand-feet ordinance, and I make the motion we not approve and grant the variance.
Motion go out.
No, we don't.
Have to close.
Do we have to go out?
Yeah.
I thought we did it in it. Okay, go ahead. Motion go out now.
Motion go out.
You just, you can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Public comments and public hearing is now closed.
Okay. Now, you can make your motion.
What I said, how about that? No, I make the motion, we don't grant the variance.
Motion made, any discussion. Mr. Bell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add an additional motion to the, put on the floor, that we table this until we have a discussion among the commissioners a little bit further before we make a decision.
We can have a discussion. We have a public hearing.
I know, I know we have a public hearing. But we have discussed it among ourselves, you know.
Now's the time. Let's discuss it. This is an open meeting, let's discuss it.
Let's get some note. Take the vote.
You have my feelings. You've got my feelings.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Counsel, if I could inquire, actually, we are sitting as a board of adjustment.
Possibly.
And as such, if there's any discussion, we would have to make those discussions in open, undoubtedly. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we would have to discuss all of that here as the board of adjustment.
Do we have to reconvene the board of adjustments to discuss it?
We haven't gone out, we just closed.
No, we just closed.
You still are, you still are, as you're sitting as a board of adjustment.
We just closed.
Close the public hearing.
We just called for the vote. We have a motion and a... We're going to vote the amended version first, correct?
I'm sorry.
Will we have to vote on the amended version first?
Well, I think what Commissioner Bell said, that he wanted to not discuss it right now, so I assume that was a motion to table it.
Right.
Is that correct, Mr. Bell?
That's correct.
So you vote on whether or not to table it today?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question for counsel. I mean, before do we discuss it? We can't discuss things like this in closed session.
That's correct.
If we're going to discuss it, we've got to discuss it in a public meeting.
That's correct.
And, I mean, we can't discuss it unless we're at a meeting. I mean, there's laws that says, it's got to, you know, the seven officers or either a majority has got to be present to discuss it.
Okay, I, we withdraw my motion. Okay. And recuse myself from voting. All right, so motion's on the floor. All in favor, see the five, raise your right hand, please. Any oppose? Motion carries. So now, we're closing out the board of adjustment and reconvene to Board of Commissioners meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda now. Mr. Honeycutt, we had a briefing at 8:00.
Yes, sir.
Everything seemed to be in order.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Commissioner Page, any discussion? All in favor, please, see the vibration, right hand. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't paying attention.
No, we need to re-vote if you want to vote.
It was consent agenda.
We have a vote, okay, I'm good.
No vote was here.
Sorry about that.
We'll vote, we'll vote.
All right, new business. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our view is recommendation to look at awarding our security officer services to Guard One, who is out of Southport, as a board... to Guard One, who is out of Southport, as a board where we have been with Sentry Security, which is a local company here in Goldboro for many, many years. And, and let me first say that the reasoning that we have looked at the possibility of bidding this service out is because it's been a while. It's not problems or issues that we have had with Sentry Security, but it was time to go out, and, and I think it is a good thing for, and a good practice and policy for the county to look at bidding out services, especially if we have done with a certain company for a long time. So we did go out, we had four proposals that were submitted, we had a committee that was made up of our social services director, our health director, Captain Ray Brogdon from the sheriff's officer, Craig Brown, who is our emergency services coordinator, Kendall Lee, and our purchasing director, Noel Woods. And after the RFQ, and after the, the looking at proposals, and after interviewing and working through the committee, the committee would like to unanimously recommend Guard One for a estimated fourteen thousand hours at two hundred one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Doherty.
I move approval as recommended by the purchasing manager to award the bid to Guard One.
Motion made, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what's the link to this contract?
Uh, we're looking at a three-year contract. Also, just to let you know, we have been, again, pleased with the services that we've had from Sentry Security. There are guards that we have had that have worked in the boarding building, at the CIB and here, that Guard One is looking at hiring them on as well and continuing, have them work, so hopefully, you know, those that, that are still interested will still work for Wayne County, or in, in the capacity for Wayne County.
Just to add on, I like the idea of a three-year contract, because it needs to be looked at every, every three years and re-bid.
Yes.
It really does, you don't need to stick.
Forever and two days. Yes, sir.
So, motion made, any other discussions? If none, we'll proceed with all in favor, please see five, raise your right hand. Now, we're going to Catch a Glimpse.
This is Catch a Glimpse for April 2019. Staff from the Wayne County Public Library stopped by to discuss Wayne County Reads, a countywide reading initiative that happens every year, and we covered events for Wayne County Reads like this one from Horace Best, where he talked about his lifelong learning and passion for photography. We stopped by the kitchen to cook with Michelle, where we learned how to make mushroom beef tacos. The Partnership for Children stopped by to discuss their early childhood conference going on in April. And Lynn Williams from the Mount Olive Pickle Company came by to talk about Pickle Festival 2019. Dr. Bert Lewis from the University of Mount Olive Music Department talked about all the great music events going on at UMO in April. And of course, we couldn't forget the air show, where we met up with the air show coordinator and found out about great Wings Over Wayne attractions this year. We stopped by and spoke with Jessica Strickland to find out everything going on in the garden right now. And we also opened EMS Station One in March. We heard a great presentation from actor Mike Wiley right here in Goldsboro, and don't forget, you can still order a brick to be placed in the Maxwell Center courtyard. Now, a video from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. This week, we're taking a look at two educational opportunities in April. Basics of County Human Services and Medicaid Transformation Convention. Both are being held in the Durham Convention Center, and the dates are April ninth and tenth. Basics of County Human Services is a part of a four-part continuum of critical topics for county commissioners to know and understand at an introductory level. Through a budget development simulation, both new and experienced commissioners will develop a much deeper understanding of their governance roles and responsibilities in this wide array of services, which includes social services, public health, mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services, all of which are so important to the quality of life in their counties. Instructors include UNC School of Government faculty members Mark Bott, Jill Moore, and Amy Wall. The NCACC continues to work with the Department of Health and Human Services leadership on Medicaid transformation. The April tenth convention is the association's latest effort to connect county policymakers and management with DHHS leadership. The shift from fee-for-service to a managed care structure represents the most significant change in the Medicaid program since its inception, and the impacts of this transformation will be felt wide and deep in county governments. This Medicaid convention is an opportunity for county commissioners and management staff to learn about challenges and opportunities associated with this change, to share feedback with the Department of Health and Human Services leadership, to speak with representatives of prepaid health plan providers, and learn about next steps, including how the new behavioral health, intellectual, and developmental disabilities tailored plans will impact local mental health entities and managed care organizations. Registration is still available for both of these events by visiting ncaccevents.org/events/hhs, or by visiting ncacc.org via the calendar of events. Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything that you've seen here, please email communications@ncacc.org. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Honeycutt, do you have any comments for us today?
Um, just a couple. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in front of you, you do, we're, you know, we're starting our budget process. The book that you have is a request from our departments with respect to the CIP. That is their request. The spreadsheets that are inside are the projects that have already been pre-vetted by the management staff working on the CIP, from finance to working with Chip and Ryan as well. So it's starting the process, so we wanted to get this in front of you as quickly as possible. In case you have any questions or concerns, we can go ahead and get those answered for you. Did want to update, you know, we talked about a little bit before, the Shell Building, if, we have our permits now, so the Shell Building is finally moving forward. We appreciate that. I appreciate the work that our economic developer, Mark Pope, has done moving that forward as well. Also, I talked to Kendall yesterday. We are looking at the opening of the Nahana EMS station around the first part of May. So we don't have a firm date, but once we do, we will do a grand opening as we did out in Seven Springs. So things are moving forward, so very pleased at the way it's going, and that's all I have.
Hey, I, I have one question. It regards to low wealth funding for the Wayne County Public Schools.
Yes, sir.
And it was discussed a little at last week's working group meetings between us and the Board of Education. And as I recall, in FY seventeen eighteen, Wayne County Public Schools lost some or all of two million dollars that they received.
Yes, sir.
We had several conversations with Representative Bell, and he was able to get that two million dollars restored. Now, fast forward to the current FY eighteen nineteen, we received word that that two million dollars was cut again to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars plus, six seventy-six, I think, something like that, comes to mind. So last May, you and Bill and I went and met with Representative Bell and Representative Johnson about trying to get that money restored and made our case and plea.
Yes, sir.
And Representative Johnson, I think it's maybe she's the committee chair of Education Appropriations, you know, she's very willing to listen to us, very, very good, and very good meeting, and she went through and, and worked the formula and had it changed, worked out, where we don't have to worry about the population like we once thought, but had it, had the formula changed that not only did the two million dollars get restored, but we were able to keep the six hundred plus thousand dollars. So Wayne County Schools got low wealth money this year in tune of two point six million dollars plus.
Yes, sir.
So I, I guess what I've been asked, and I would like to know myself, could you email the superintendent and ask him for this two point six million dollars low wealth funding, where, what line items or what program areas is this money appropriated to, and how is it currently spent?
Yes, sir.
Is that pretty clear?
Yes, sir, be more than glad to.
Okay, is anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question. So if I'm following that, actually, Wayne County Schools received an additional six hundred thousand dollars, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
So I, I think your question is, where?
Additionally, two million dollars, because they were cut back by four million to six hundred thousand, so they got two million restored, so they got two million more than what they were supposed to get. But it was a cut, yes, from the previous year, that it got restored.
Well, again, for clarification purposes, how much additional funding did Wayne County's school system get for the new formula, the new way they're, they're formulating that?
If you go back to the earlier two meetings, additional six hundred thousand plus.
That's my understanding.
And that's my understanding going forward, that should be safe now.
Right, and you, you should probably see, if the formula's increased, and there should probably be an increase going forward for next year as well, with those six hundred thousand dollar increase from this year.
So they changed the formula, basically.
Right.
So we no longer have to be concerned about population because the formula has been changed.
The best I can understand.
Right. Well, that's good, good information.
Yep. Unlike what we heard last week.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And that was my question.
Okay. Any meaning of mind in mode, Commissioner Mayes?
Well, what a, what a introduction. I wanted to, got a couple of things. First of all, about the, I got a couple of comments about the eighty-four families on this buyout. I have spent probably dozens of hours on the phone and in meetings with David Harris. I want to say that I commend David and his staff, and limited staff that he's been able to get for this reason. Every single time that I've talked to him, I, he does, he can't remember when he's had a weekend off. His, his staff is working Saturday, Sunday, whatever it takes to try to get this together. And I'm, I'm not bragging, I'm just saying that I see the dedication from, from David's eyes and his heart, and especially his performance. So I want to thank David for what he's done so far, and, and I made it clear, Commissioner Kamari, where our problems are as far as funding. Moving on, we also had a DSS meeting last week, and of course, the still number one topic in, in DSS across the state is NC FAST, and I spoke with Jim Perry, Senator Jim Perry about it. He was, you know, all the legislature got an, got an enlightening a few weeks ago that, you know, we got ninety-two million dollars in this thing across the state, and what do we do? You know, it's useless, so enough said. I saved the best for last. I attended on March twenty-seventh on the steps of City Hall, but it was, it was cold and the wind was blowing, we had to go inside. I attended the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation Ceremony. And our child abuse here in Wayne County is in epidemic proportions according to Judge Erica James. She mentioned that she had a hundred and forty cases on her docket. And April is declared as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We need to, we need to, we need to pay attention to this and take this seriously. There are several things that's going to happen, but the next event will be April the ninth at the UNC Wayne Healthcare, where the children's memorial flag will be raised. If you, if, if you keep an eye out on the papers and so forth, you'll find what's going on, on April Child Prevention Month. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I read this proclamation?
By all means, sir.
That, that we read. Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children ensure all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I do proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. The twenty-seventh day of March 2019. This includes all of us. You can work in the health department, you can work at DSS, you can work in any department or any private business in this county, child abuse is there, if you look around. So let's do our part, and I appreciate the sheriff being there at this meeting and taking a part in this, a very supportive, our sheriff's department. We need to step up to the plate, because when you hear some of these statistics and some of the cases that are mentioned, it does break your heart. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayes. Commissioner Kamari?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go back to the business of the eighty-four families in just a moment. And, and I know Mr. David Harris has been forced a lot, and by all measures, he's excellent at what he does, but Mr. Doherty made a cut, brought out something that I, I think may have been relevant, that the attorneys that were, I misunderstood, the attorneys in the firms that were, were, were being seeked after, if they wanted to, there was a lot of paperwork they would have to do to just be able to, so they were qualified to do it. You would assume that if they had a licensed practice law in the county or in the state, they would have already been, had enough credentials to go ahead and be approved at this law firm. And, and the other thing is, that I, I recognize that you deal with eighty-four parcels and eighty-four different families, that's reason to ask the question, did he have enough personnel to help him do the job? He said, you know, yes, he did, but then he's working all over the weekends, and that would suggest that maybe someone might take a look at, who's in authority, take a look at the number of people that's helping him and make sure that there are enough, because you would assume that if he had enough people, he would have to be working over the weekend. I'm, I'm just old country boy, that's the way I see it, but maybe I'm missing something. And from a very personal standpoint, I had a property damaged in eighty-four, and it was rental property, and, and after listening to all this, I probably just didn't see where there was no need for me to even do anything, just, and out of my pocket, I had to rob Peter Pay Paul to fix houses and clean. Just out of my pocket, I had to rob Peter Pay Paul to fix houses and clean what it took to fix the house, and then rent that I missed, I counted up $23,000. So I thought, man, I ain't gonna get nothing because these 84 families in front of me somewhere, and they haven't gotten anything. So I just saw it as a waste of time. And when Joe said eight families withdrew, I thought to myself, if I thought my little piece in there, that'd be nine people that are withdrawn because, you know, I leave it at that. But, and that's why I yielded to Mr. Flowers to see if he heard this morning what was satisfied his concern. Because you see, if you're not in the weeds, you don't know what the weeds are. And I know we can have all kinds of philosophical opinions up here, but that's why I yielded to him to see if he heard enough that he could be satisfied with his personal situation. Maybe if anybody asked him, he could share that. But to go on, let me go to something that was, I think, maybe a more pleasant subject. I along, or in the same company with our sheriff was at the Inner Faith Breakfast last Saturday. And yes, it, we could have been doing something else, but that was a worthwhile event to be at. We heard three interesting speakers, and I'm not guessing that the ones we've heard in the past were not as interesting, but they were, some of touches on a subject that we need to be, maybe sometime I hear what you want to hear, but we need to be a little bit more considerate of our fellow man and to listen to what the person next to you is saying, and maybe understanding where they're coming from. The last, you know, the last person who spoke, last minister, pastor, whatever I should call it, it was interesting that he went back and talked about all the people, not all of them, but a good 10 or 12 people who had had an impact on his life. And because I knew some of them that he was talking about, I thought, that's good. That was just good, that he would look back and know that he hadn't gotten there all by himself. It would publicly acknowledge those people, principal of his high school, his college coach, and a variety of other people. But that proved interesting that they, and just to have an opportunity to meet and sit next to our new senator representing this area. Very personable person and pleasant, so I just want to say that. He seems to feel like he's doing a good job up there. I hope he is. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Daughery.
Again, I find myself in a situation of having to be careful on selecting my words. But I took great offense to an article of the newspaper where it indicated that they were backroom deals. I think that was the term that was used, backroom deals. Most boards in government generally assign groups, working groups, to go out and try to arrive at a consensus to take back to their individual boards or commissions in order to get things done. Things just don't happen just by chance. You generally have to have a working group to go out and explore possibilities. Now, for someone to characterize that as a backroom deal or to indicate that there's something wrong with that, I think is in itself wrong. There were never any deals so-called made that I'm aware of. There were discussions that were brought back to full boards, for full boards to actually make those decisions. I mean, you do that when you plan to build a building. You can't just automatically just go and authorize building a building. You've got to have a working group go out and say, what is the need? Let's develop the need. Where are we going to locate it? So I suppose some people can say those were backroom deals, but I took offense to that. Secondly, we did have one of those backroom deals the other day, backroom meetings. And the purpose of that meeting was basically so that two boards could in fact have a conversation and find out where in the world we had gone wrong and where we could correct the direction. In that meeting was a 50, I think it was 55 slides. I mean, it was unbelievable in regards to the information. I think it was two hours of listening to all of that. I took great offense to one of those slides where it stated at the bottom of that, Commissioner Daughery tells the public on May the 14th of 2018 at that meeting that they would get a competition gym. Now, I don't think the rest of this, my fellow board members have deemed me to be king for the day. There's no way that I could in fact make such a promise. Because I can't by myself promise anything and deliver anything without at least three of my fellow board members agreeing to that. We did discuss moving forward or how we could move forward. And at that meeting was when it was suggested by the schools, since we had various estimates, one estimate was 7.5 million, another estimate was 4.5 million dollars. Well, how much is this gym going to cost? So the suggestion was made that they put it out for bids so that we could narrow that down and find out what we were dealing with. I did concur and had no objection to them putting it out for bids. Now, to jump to the conclusion that I promised, or I, let me get that right, at the meeting that they would get a competition gym, to jump to that conclusion, I think is a far stretch. So I did take offense to that. One of the reasons I bring that up is that evidently this has been disseminated in the public, and I want to make sure everyone is aware of the fact, and my fellow board members, that I did not in fact promise a competition gym in Southern Wayne. How do we move forward? I do not know how you move forward unless you continue to have working groups that explore possibilities and from those working groups, bring it back to the boards for us to have further deliberation. I don't know, no way to do that. So I understand the superintendent has made a statement, I read it, that he would not attend any more backroom meetings. I don't know how he's hoping to get anything accomplished unless he does in fact attend some of those meetings. I'll hush with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Daughery. Commissioner Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any committee meetings this time because I spent that time at Duke, most of my appointments. But I would like to let you know, the commissioners, that I had the facility guy from probation parole from Raleigh came through, was just traveling through, and that's why he called me. So I invited him to go down and look at the new building. He was amazed that our facilities could do such a professional job. So y'all need to go down and take a look at the new building down there. That is a professional job that he's doing down there. So I give a shout out to Kendall Lee and his staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill. Mr. Stait.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I usually try to keep mine brief, but since we're in the point that we have to have everything out on the open table, we can't have working groups, I'm going to be quite lengthy today. First of all, this past Sunday night, they had a Christian youth rally at the Maxwell Center. And I had a couple of them last year, and they trying to, want to try to have a couple this year. And I attended it, not for the whole thing, but for part of it. This past Sunday night, according to the staff at the Maxwell Center and the churches that put on this program, we had 1,100 youth, middle school and high school students at a youth rally at the Maxwell Center. So we talk, we keep talking about Maks and not the Maks. What we spent on that building is worth just this one youth rally. And it was all denominations, all races. It was, this was all about the youth. And I just want to commend the churches, we even had some churches from outside the county. I just want to commend them on what they're doing with our youth because our youth is our future. And the staff put in long hours out there Sunday night. I want to commend them. Also, the county lost a vital employee unexpectedly week before last. And I just want to thank, he was also a volunteer fireman, I just want to thank his fire department families, it was three departments that he was real close with. I want to thank them for the act of support and love that they showed to that family. And also our county employees. Good thing we didn't have anything going on with any facilities because it would have just had not happened because, I mean, the facility staff really showed their support. And also, a lot of staff and from other departments. Was that John Cash's funeral? And I just want to thank them for the support that they gave John's family. Madam Clerk, you may have already taken care of this or worked on in the future. On our Catch a Glimpse, I would like for someone in the future, and I know you have in the past, let's give a little plug in for Wayne Community College. We've got a great program fixing to be going on out there with the expansion of our automotive program. It's moving forward. This will be a first for the community college system for a project like this. Got the blessings of the community college board in Raleigh to move forward with like the county's been building buildings. Very excited about that, you know. We'll just talk to Dr. Walker or somebody, or media people or whatever out there in the future. I appreciate that because that's the part of Wayne County that we need to be proud Also, I had the pleasure of attending the Dapdive Festival, got to get a plug in for the North End, Dapdive Festival in Fremont. They had beautiful weather, great turnout, and I think it was a real success. They did a fantastic job. Also, as mentioned a while ago about Mr. Harris having to work on the weekends and all, we've got to keep in mind, a lot of these people that are disaffected, they're still having to, they're still having to work. They've got a job to go to. It might be more convenient, I don't know this now, but it may be more convenient for him to have to work on the weekends to accommodate them. You know, just because they haven't been helped yet, I mean, they still got jobs, a lot of them got jobs, they're just struggling to make ends meet. Mr. Honeycutt, this has been mentioned before, there's a lot of events going on in the county. We cannot attend them all, but they're just not showing up on our calendar. And we would, we'd need to know about them, even though we can't attend them all. They need to be on our calendar. If you could look into that, please. And last, been mentioned about the relationship between the county and the school system. I've had conversations with a lot of people, a lot of people got different opinions. I do appreciate our working group that has sat in and worked with the schools, but this is, this is probably deeper than a lot of people realize, and we need to move forward. There's so many things that's been mandated from higher above that actually goes on in the school system that maybe the school board don't have to say so in it. But there's some things that they probably need to object to that they're not objecting to. But I've been on this board a little over six years now, and this school issue has probably bothered me, and I've had as many or more calls on it trying to explain what the county can and can't do, than anything else that's ever been on this board. And the son of us sitting up here, the decisions that are made today, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference to us. I'm thinking about my grandchildren, my great grandchildren, that's who it's going to affect. So again, I want to appreciate the working, our working committee that has worked with the schools, for lack of a better word, you're doing a good job, and you've got my support. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for letting me be long-winded today.
Thank you, Commissioner Stait. Commissioner Pink.
Without covering some of the same ground that was addressed by Commissioner Daughery about our meeting the other day, it's essential that we have working groups, and there are a lot of hard conversations we still got to have to bring this back together. I think we did make some strides the other day, I really do believe that, over there yet now. The biggest issue is we have finite dollars. Of course, since sales tax did not pass, a lot of the conversations we're having now, we wouldn't even be having. But there we are. You've got to live within your means, everything can't happen at once, and most sides have to find ways to find dollars to meet immediate needs. And having said that, in the end, just like he just said, guys we've got to look after our kids, it can't be about us grownups having disagreements. I want to thank our county manager for stepping in for me the other day when I agreed to take a, and read the proclamation, and then on Memorial Veterans Day, I did not check my calendar, and I had a meeting at the hospital. So thank you so much for doing that. I appreciate that. And I know they were very appreciative that someone had come over. Just one final thing, tomorrow's We Dig It Day, so if you got a chance, go out to Don and Farms and see those kids out there. It's always a pleasure, I always enjoy it. I think the rains are supposed to end today, because it's raining just about every year out there. So I'll see you guys tomorrow out there if you're there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pink. I made just a few notes this morning while I was sitting with Clyde and looking at the news, and it's going to sound like a repeat of what Commissioner Daughery said, but bear with me. Last week's News Argus had a news article in there, and the caption was, "Time to End Backroom Meetings." It's an excellent written story, I don't know who the author of the story was, but well-written. Did very well with it. But there were some inaccuracies in it, and it wasn't a writer's fault, he can only write what he hears, but the description of the meetings that, of backroom meetings, these type of meetings do occur, but we typically call them working group meetings, where it's a smaller group of people, may be elected officials, it may not be elected officials in it. But the purpose of having these type of working groups is to have a smaller group of people in a more relaxed atmosphere where you can build concurrences, and each group can go back to their respective boards or whomever they're reporting back to with a recommendation or recommendations. And no one board person can grant anything to anyone, and we all know that. And we have to build those concurrences, come back and make recommendations and sell our people, or make modifications, whatever the recommendations be. Just because you sit there and agree with something, doesn't mean it can't be modified or won't be modified. So, and I'm not here to point fingers to anyone, but in the news article and in the PowerPoint presentation, there was a couple of things mentioned in there about the two meetings at the Southern Wayne High School with community leaders, boosters club, et cetera. And I think in the article, maybe it called out Commissioners Kamori, Daughery, and myself. And furthermore, in the PowerPoint presentation, it called out the two meeting dates. So here's where the pot's calling the kettle black. On the May 14th meeting, I wasn't even there. I was in the hospital. So yes, somebody probably does need record stuff for them. I agree. In closing to it, for someone to imply backroom meetings the way it was implied, or the way I interpret it anyway, and the amount of time I've spent myself, educating myself on some of the obstacles that's placed- of the obstacles that's placed before us, and the amount of time that I have spent on the low-well funding, for someone to say that is insult to me, and is disrespectful to me, this board, and our staff. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go back to closed session for the purpose of, do I have a motion? Motion made on the favor. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Honeycutt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as boards are aware, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about next steps with the respect with school issues and, and what the position of the county is, and I'll have a recommendation that I would like to read to you. First, let me thank our attorneys, I want to thank staff for all the input that has been given in working towards, uh, trying to come up with this recommendation, so, uh, if the chairman's okay, I'll be glad to read it.
Please proceed.
All right. Uh, this letter will be sent to Superintendent Mike Dunsmore, as well as the Board of Education members for Wayne County Public Schools. Dear Mike, the Board of Commissioners recommends the following to you and the Board of Education to begin moving the projects forward in a positive direction. Number one, with respect to the Grantham Sewer Line project that was also bond-funded, we have a positive balance of $518,513 that can be transferred to Wayne County Public Schools for either of the remaining bond projects at Southern Wayne Gym, uh, the gym or the classrooms. The Board of Commissioners has the option to use the funds to retire the debt earlier, but fill these funds needs to be used for projects covered by the 2017 funding agreement. Number two, the 2017 funding agreement obligated the county to use the projected cost savings by the Wayne County Public School System for operating a new wing at Meadow Lane for Edgewood, which was $527,000 that we projected in savings moving to a new facility. One half of these savings were retained by the county in 2018-19 fiscal year budget, while the other half was agreed upon to be retained by Wayne County fully for 1920. Wayne County will continue to support the operations of the current Edgewood School and reinvest the full $527,000 savings that have not materialized back into your operations for the Edgewood School, uh, for 2019, or 1920 and 2021. However, if federal estate funding streams are increased such that the $527,000 is no longer required, the county will utilize the funds for debt service as outlined by the current funding agreement. And again, as part of this agreement, Wayne County Public Schools agrees to operate the Edgewood Development Day School separately at its current location for this two-year period. Wayne County Public Schools will develop a long-term operational plan for these students moving forward. Number three, the capital funding agreement, which again is still in effect, requires the Board of Education use of $4.4 million of sales tax funds set aside for classrooms at Fremont Stars and/or Northwest Elementary. The Board of Commissioners will authorize a minimum of 10 classrooms to be built at Northwest based upon the existing bids that have already been submitted. The cost savings from the reduced number of classes can be used, and will be used, excuse me, will be used for the Southern Wayne Gym project. The following shall be approximate breakdown of the funding sources for the Southern Wayne Gym project. We have the 207, uh, the 2017 bond original allocation, uh, which is $3.2 million. Uh, we have the savings as mentioned above, uh, from Grantham Sewer at $518,513, and again, since we are looking at a reduced number of classrooms at Northwest or Fremont Stars, uh, there's a $2 million cost savings there, so that we're saying that they can use those funds, uh, for any shortfalls at, uh, Southern Wayne Gym. Uh, but again, other than this, this revenue, if there is a deficit, any deficit shall be the responsibility of the Wayne County Public School System. Number four, with respect to any additional funding from Wayne County to satisfy these 2017 bond projects, Wayne County Public School System shall maximize all of its current funding allocations to satisfy the conditions of the bond. The Board of Commissioners has no surplus, no surplus funds from the 2017 bond issuance other than the funds listed in item one above. And number five, with respect to the K3 classroom mandate, Wayne County Public School System will utilize existing facilities through redistricting before coming to the county for additional classroom funding. Once the redistricting plan has been completed and that there is a date for implementation, the Board of Commissioners and Wayne County Public School System must meet and jointly approve of a classroom plan that will satisfy the mandate. And again, all other aspects of the 2017 funding agreement, uh, shall remain in effect. Wayne County's issues must focus on the future needs of our schools as required with respect to the classroom mandate issues, not projects that have already been approved and funded by both, both, by both boards with agreed-upon debt service arrangements, and I submit this for your recommendation.
Thank you. Any commissioner have any comments?
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we submit this letter to the superintendent of Wayne County Schools and the Wayne County Board of Education, put it in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor, please, six, five, raise your right hand. Thank you. Anything else coming for us today?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.